All right, it is now recording.
So I just wanted to speak to looking over the agenda for this evening. I was a little upset to find that there has not been any mention of a school nurse since our school nurse resigned approximately two months ago. In the middle of a health pandemic, I feel that this is a huge fall that has been dropped for the students of the district. And I just wanted to know what the plan was going forward. You know, with the reopening guidelines, you know, you know that I am a school nurse for another district. I'm actually head of that department and I just am really concerned about hiring a nurse, whether they have ever been a school nurse or not. Most nurses that come into the districts have not been a school nurse, so I'm hoping that you do have somebody that you're kind of looking at that has been a school nurse. Prior to coming into this, because this whole COVID aspect, as you guys all know, is a huge undertaking. It's going to be an enormous, an enormous job for, for somebody to do.
Is that your question? Okay.
Yeah.
Dan, you want to address?
Yeah, I'll speak to that briefly. So we posted for a school nurse somewhere around the 20th of June. We received two applications and we wanted to do a further outreach, so we actually have posted the position on OLAAS. We're trying to get more applications, so it is definitely on our radar. I believe that resignation came right around June 20th. So that's, we posted it almost immediately after it occurred. I don't know Toby, if you remember the exact date, but it was right around June 20th or so that, that we received that and we posted that job initially. Right now, you are correct, we don't have somebody.
I don't know the exact date, but it wasn't, it was still in June.
Yeah, so the attention is definitely there. We understand we have an opening. We've got a couple of resumes and it's still being posted, so. It's on the agenda, obviously, because we're not going to appoint anyone to that position just yet. We have another meeting in August. August 17th, I believe. So perhaps we'll have some candidates by then. So, okay. Thank you, Ms. Spoucher.
Sure.
Anyone else requesting to speak? Toby, you said you had no one, right?
There's nobody else in the chat requesting to speak right now.
All right, great.
Moving down, next on the agenda would be the recognition of successes. I don't know if Tom's microphone is going in and out there. I do want to recognize the cleaning, the cleaning staff and all of the people that are working here in the summertime. As you know, the district made several reductions in staffing. In the proposed budget, the first proposed budget. And those people have, have been stepping up. The ones who are, who are still here working in the summer have been stepping up because we are staffed with several fewer people than we normally would be in the summertime. So I wanted to put that out there. The cleaners have done a great job. Building looks really nice. They've gotten some training on cleaning and disinfecting techniques as we prepare to come back in the reopening. But I just wanted to, I just wanted to put that out there for the board and for the community and everybody else to hear. Tom is back. You might be muted, Tom.
Yeah, I'm having some problems with my wifi due to the storm, so if I drop, I apologize. But Dan, if you want to address the first item on the agenda, please.
Yep, so I did the recognition of successes, so we're at presentations. There, there is no presentation this evening. There are no committee reports this evening, so it brings us to superintendent's report. If that's okay, I'll continue on there.
Yeah, please.
Okay. So the reopening plan, actually the first item under there is merger study update. I'll do them in order. So just want to put the update there. We have been doing that along the way for the past, a long time. We, we have received some responses to our request for proposals for consultants. The board is interviewing consultants and they will be bringing more information about that at the August 17th meeting. But I did want to let people know that that process does continue and that is in no way attached to the recent budget failure. That timeline had been progressing either way. So I just want to put that out there for folks. That is not something that was changed due to anything to do with our budget failing to pass. Reopening plan. So the reopening plan for the school district was posted last Friday. Also posted on social media. To go to our website to view it, there was also a video from me providing just some, some brief information about it, also letting people know that there is still details to be worked out as we move towards coming back to school. As many of you know, the guidance does change and it changed quickly at times. We, we feel we have a solid plan. You'll see similarities and differences between ours and other local school districts. One of the things I do want to just mention tonight is that anybody who watched the governor's addresses, either Saturday, which I did not see, but yesterday I did watch, the governor made reference to COVID testing being done by school districts. That was the first time that's been mentioned. That is not included in our plan, is not included in anybody's plans. There are many superintendents around the state of New York saying, where did this come from? And we are seeking some guidance on that. But I met with, I spoke with the Department of Health up at Washington County and Public Safety this morning and asked them about that. And the gentleman I was speaking to said, yes, we have no idea how you would accomplish testing, or if you would even be allowed to do so based on the rules and regulations as they now stand. So I want to put that out there. So anybody who's reading our plan and says, my goodness, these people didn't include the part about how many kids are going to test and how often they're going to share the results with the community. Because that was never meant to be part of anybody's plan. And I don't know if it will be part of people's plans now or have to be, but it certainly, there was no mention of that being a part of a plan prior to whatever the governor said Saturday that I did not hear, but certainly what he said Monday was, was totally new information for us. So. Stay tuned, is what I would say about that. Talking about our reopening plan, there, there is a yellow banner on our school website. We'll be putting information under that. That's where the plan is. That's where the video is for me. That's also where there's a survey for parents who are looking for a virtual only option. As of today, we had 15 responses there of parents who are looking to be virtually only. And also want to say that there was 113 community members, parents, guardians that responded to our earlier survey when we were asking for information about reopening and their thoughts on reopening schools. So I want to thank the people, the 113 people who came out and responded to that. I want to thank the 15 parents and guardians that have come out and responded about their, their want for their children to be virtual only when school reopens. And just want to put a reminder out there, if there's any other parents who are looking for their students to attend by virtual or remote means only, you could go and answer that survey. So we have your information. That's going to help us do the final details of our reopening plan. Certainly, the overall number of students coming back has got to be factored into our, our reopening plan and the final details.
Dan, can you remind us what the deadline is for people that are signing up for the 10-week virtual learning?
Yep. So I have to look, but I know I, I believe I gave two weeks from last Thursday, so it would be next Thursday. Is that the? I will look and tell you in a second, but it was like the 13th or the 15th.
That's what it's about.
But I'll, I'll absolutely double check it here.
August 15th.
August 15th. You have it right there, Todd. Thank you. August 15th.
Thank you.
We want to give people time, but we also have to have enough time once the parents and guardians respond, so that we can use that information to help do those final details in our plan. The other piece is that we're going to have two, I'll call question and answer events, and we're going to do it virtually, just like this. There's one that's going to be for faculty and staff. And we're looking at, we are scheduling those for the 13th. For faculty and staff at 3:00 PM on the 13th. And there'll be a link sent out to, to faculty and staff through email. And on that same day at 5:30 PM, there'll be one for parents, guardians and community members. So on the 13th, we'll be doing two of those Q and A's. I do expect that we're going to have questions that we can't answer at that time. And then we'll probably have to come out again and do something between the 13th and when school reopens. So I just want to let you know that we are going to get a conduit opened up to our community as the details become available, as we're working through those. That's what I had under superintendent's report.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Next item on the agenda is discussion items, is that correct?
Yeah, we're gonna, there's no reports from, from anyone because this is a special meeting. Those reports will be brought back up on the 17th for the regular meeting. So
Gotcha.
Under discussion items, there, there's a need for additional reductions as the board, and I'm, I'm certain that everyone on the, on the meeting right now, on the meet knows there's some additional reductions that have to take place. And there's a conversation the board has to have about some of those in executive session because they have to do with the employment of specific individuals. And there, there is some good thinking going on, but we have to make that budget number. And therefore, the reductions that have been talked about very publicly, because they're not about the, the employment of specific individuals or any of those protected areas like the athletics and extracurriculars and those, those reductions. Those, those, those have occurred. Those items have been removed from your budgets that you're going to approve tonight, and so have the dollar amounts for the necessary staffing reductions. But there are a few things that the board should discuss further about those exact staffing reductions in executive session. There is certainly a lot of concern, and I have the same concern about student mental health and counseling needs as they come back to school. And without going into too much detail, we can certainly have a general conversation. But please remember that we have so few employees in certain job titles that if we have too much of a discussion in open session, we are talking about that person's job and we need to be mindful of that. So I'll open it up to any, anybody from the board that wants to speak about the reductions, knowing that they have to occur and we've talked about the ones that we've listed previously for many months in finance committee.
Does anyone have any questions at this point? We'll be discussing it in exec. Does anyone have any questions at this point for Dan?
I, I'm going to bring up one more piece. The, the, a lot, a lot of newspaper articles about extracurriculars, athletics. I will, I do want to just share some information with the board. It's, it's public, public information with anybody on the, on the call here this evening. Any fundraising efforts that are done to try to reinstate programs or personnel or anything like that have to be done with a certain set of rules. The school district is, is not going to be out fundraising, although private entities can, can do so. The board's role in this would be, obviously, if you live here, you can be part of a outside of the school entity as well as being on the school board. You just need to make sure that you're not operating or telling people you're operating, or having people think you're operating in your official capacity as a board member while you're engaging in those types of activities. I'm not saying that they're not great activities. I just want people to be mindful of that. The other is that any donations, if fundraising occurs and there are donations to be made, I'm going to use a very easy example. Let's say that a group raises money and they say that this money is only for the X team. That, that, that kind of condition cannot be placed upon something that we, the board can accept. Because we have to be mindful of Title IX considerations, so any donations that the board was going to accept, I would recommend through advice of council, that we make sure that those provide equal opportunities for males and females as required by law. So I just want to get that out there publicly. I did meet briefly with the Booster Club and a few concerned folks earlier or late, what we, what's today? Last week, actually, just to go through that information with them. Because we didn't, I didn't want them to get ahead on something, and I'm not saying they're planning to do something, but I wanted to make sure they had the proper information so that they didn't go about their fundraising efforts in a way in which the board would not be able to accept any donation if one were to become available through fundraising. So.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate you saying that. There was a village meeting last night that I had attended and, and Carrie Traskos was there as well. Speaking about the upcoming meeting that's happening Thursday at 7:30, provided by the families of Ford Edward, I believe, for fundraising efforts and things like that. Which is worth announcing as well. But Carrie was on the meeting last night and there was some great talk between the village, talking about helping out in a lot of different ways. And still the conversation point, but a couple of things were brought up last night. I echoed what you had just said about the donations. But I want it to be a little more clear and hopefully I said correctly that someone can't just make a donation for football, like you said. It has to be more general in a sense, so it may be for athletics. Or if someone made a donation for fall sports and there was no fall sports, the school cannot refund money. Is that true?
Right, we have no mechanism to give the donation back, because once a donation is accepted by the board, those funds become public funds. And we can't give those public funds back to anybody. It would be a gift of public funds, as I've been advised by council. Certainly, if a specific amount of money was raised to fund fall sports and, or, or whatever, and then we didn't have fall sports, certainly that money could be used for something else.
Right, right. It doesn't sound correct. I got you. Okay. The other thing, other question that came up, it was a good question. Obviously, using the school is restricted during a contingent budget. But if an organization had the proper credentials, insurance and things like that, and understood the costs that we would have to charge for using the school, which could be electric, could be heat, could be sanitizing during COVID, could be cleaning, all those things, and we came up with whatever price schedule that was. Is that allowed during a contingent budget, or is that something that the board has to vote to allow to happen? How does that all work?
Yep. So the, the facilities can be used. All costs must be borne by the group that's using the facilities. In addition to that, in our COVID plan, the school district is not open on the weekends and it closes two hours after the students leave. So we've got, you know, yes, it can happen. Right now, there won't be much opportunity based on the reopening plan. But legally, yes, it can, as long as they bear the entire, the entire cost.
Okay. Thank you for that information. Okay. I think that kind of clears up any questions that took place, but it was a good meeting with the village last night and they are open to talking and doing some things to help us out in areas where they can help. Including some recreational things. So, but that's a conversation that'll be ongoing. Okay. So, any other questions on the discussion item? I think we moved past that. So our next item on the agenda. Think I need longer arms to read this off my phone here.
Yep. So I just want to, I just want to mention as we move in, that there was an updated agenda sent out to the board members. The changes were in yellow, but for the folks that don't have them, as you're looking at your agenda, under action items, we added item G, which was a motion to accept the bid for the 21-passenger bus equipped with a wheelchair lift from Leonard Bus Sales, because that came in today. And then under personnel, item C has been amended to say effective August 30th for the resignation of Alicia Lacrosse. But those are, so those are the changes to the agenda.
Okay. I don't have G, but I do see C, so I'll go down off my agenda. I'm going to go from there. So we're going to go down to action items, folks. Folks, I need a motion to accept the results of the July 28th, 2020 school budget revote. Proposition one, school budget failed 309, yes to 318, no. I need a motion to accept.
Motion.
Chris. Todd? Any discussion? I would like to say to everyone that came out to, to vote, the important part, folks coming to vote, didn't turn out the way I think we would like, but the community did speak. On that, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Still moved? Yeah, I just have it. I need a motion to approve a contingent budget for the 2020-2021 school year in the amount of $11,179,469.
Motion.
Nita?
Second.
I think I heard Ella there, the second. Any discussion?
I just want to know if we are able to, in our executive session, still kind of negotiate or talk about some of the items that are in there before we, like, is the amount, the amount, no matter what we do in there in our executive session?
Yep.
Are there possible changes that can come or, or no?
The amount, the amount can't get any higher because you don't have any funds to fund anything higher than that.
Right. But can some of the line items be adjusted at all, if it all comes out the same number?
I would say yes, within contingent budget rules.
Okay.
I think we also need to state too, that as a board, we are going to do the best possible thing we can do for the kids of this district, to make sure the students have the best year that they can under the circumstances. I think that's important to state.
Absolutely.
Yes.
So I have motions on the table, all in favor of B.
Hi.
Hi.
Any abstentions? Any abstentions? Okay, so moved. C, I need a motion to approve a refund of real property tax in the amount of $1,013.55 to Douglas Pennington per the application received from the Washington County Office of Real Property for parcel 163.1713-12. The refund is owed due to a clerical error in the town assessor's office. Need a motion?
Need a motion.
Ella? Was that Chris? Okay. Ella, Chris, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Any noes? Any abstaining? Okay, so moved. D, I need a motion to accept an anonymous donation in the amount of $1,000.
Motion.
Motion.
Nita and Chris, any discussion other than thank you very much, anonymous person?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was very thoughtful.
Yeah. All in favor?
Hi.
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 I'm doubting there's any noes out there, but I have to ask. Okay. All right, so moved. Motion to approve the disposal of the fixed assets as identified on the list in the board packets.
Motion.
Chris? Anita?
One item, yes.
Any discussions on, on that item? Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any noes? Abstentions? Okay. Need a motion to adopt the following resolution for the 2020-2021 school year as listed on your agenda. If anyone needs me to read it out loud, please let me know. Thank you for that. I need a motion for F. James, is that you saying motion? Okay.
Yep. Yeah.
James? Need a second. Chris?
Yep.
Any discussion? Dan, are you trying to ask a question? I see you're, you're lighting up there, but do you have a question on Dan Shields on F?
Nope.
Okay, great. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any noes? Okay, good. We're all good, so moved. And item G, since it's not on my agenda, Dan, would you please read it?
Yep. So item G is motion to accept the bid from Leonard Bus Sales for the five-year lease of a 21-passenger wheelchair lift-equipped bus at a cost of $10,741 per year or each year. The bus replaces one that was turned in in June 2020. Leasing voter approved on 6/28/2020.
Need a motion, folks?
Motion.
Motion.
Nita, Dan Shields, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
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 All good on that one? Okay. Moving on to personnel. Item A, need a motion to appoint Shawna Brown as tutor for the E S Y for a specific student at a rate of pay per the F E T A contract. She was previously appointed as interim tutor. I need a motion.
Motion.
Chris?
I'll second.
James? Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Any noes? Any abstaining? Okay, good. So, so moved. Motion to accept the resignation of Jason Finn, effective August 1st, 2020.
Motion.
Nita and Chris?
Second.
Your hand there, okay. Any discussion on that?
Who was your second?
Chris, I saw Chris's hand. Chris.
Chris, okay.
How, how long was Mr. Finn teaching at our school?
That's a great question. I don't have the exact number. I, I think it was probably, I think I have eight years in my head.
He did a great job. My daughter definitely.
Yeah, thank you.
And he was a really great teacher.
Longer than eight years if Kiki Super Night had him as a teacher.
Oh, okay. Well. Oh, wow. Holy cow. So he's been with us for a while.
I think she said she's now 54 years old, so he.
Been here for a while. Okay. So, well, regardless of the time he's been here, he's certainly been a cherished teacher and I've had great experience with Jason. I know my daughter has enjoyed his class as well, so we will accept, I imagine, with regret. So, did we get motions on that? Yeah. So all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Nita, did you say something? No, okay. Okay. Any, any noes? Any abstaining? Okay. So moved, with regret. We wish him very well. A motion to accept the resignation of Alicia Lacrosse, effective August 30th, 2020.
Motion.
Anita? Was either waving to someone or she said, yeah?
I said, yeah, I said motion. It was me.
Okay. Anita and Chris, did I hear you, Chris?
Yes.
motions on the table. Any discussion on this motion?
Again, thank her for her service.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, she did a great job. She had a couple of really cool classes, too. Mr. Lacrosse was with us for two years, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember when she came on board, yeah. So with regret and we wish her well. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Any noes? Any abstentions? Okay, all right. Typically, before we go into executive session, which is what we'll do next, we ask if anyone has anything they wanted to say, a public comment. Toby, did you get any secret messages sent your way, pigeon carry or anything?
No, I did not.
Yeah, there's nothing that didn't open in the chat either.
So Dan, you want to give your, we're not taking action after we get out of exec speech before we go in?
Yep, absolutely. So, so there, there's no action items that, that I'm aware of, that the board will be taking action on when we come back out of executive session. That being said, I will stop the recording. The board will convene an executive session through a distinct. The board will convene an executive session through a distinct private link. And then we will come back in the public sessions to restart the recording to do our adjournment. So we will come back into public for anybody who wants to say and see us come back out and adjourn the meeting.
All right. That being said, I need a motion to enter into executive session to discuss matters referring to the employment of specific individuals impending litigation.
Motion.
Dan? Who's the second?
Todd.
Second, thank you.
Todd.
Todd Tyler.
Board of education members and other individuals invited into executive session are reminded that all matters discussed during executive session must be kept in the strictest confidence. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, Tom.
Yes.
Pretty sure I saw a question come across in the chat as you were doing a speech. I'm not sure if that's what happened.
It was a reopening question.
Okay.
All right, let's let's address it before we go through exec. Is there any changes in the hours of school? I have heard some changes in other school districts. Dan, you have an answer for that?
Yeah, yeah, I can answer that. Right now, the answer is no. I am aware that some other school districts have done so. Sorry, somebody's trying to join. Some other districts have done so. There are some specific reasons why there's been no changes yet for ours. Ours, our work hours, our workday is contractually controlled. Where other school districts have, the workday for certain employees will be X number of hours. Here in Fort Edward, in one or more of our contracts, it says specific bargaining unit individuals will work from 7:55 to 3:10 or something along those lines. So there's, there's some more work to be done if we need to change the opening hours or the running hours of school.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you, Dan. I thank you for your question. Ms. Jarvis. And all right, folks, we will see you in exec on another link. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll send it out. You guys don't need, you guys don't need, you guys don't need Charlene in executive session? Or do you need her in executive session?
I'd ask if she comes just for the beginning, just so we can, do you have any questions regarding?
Charlene, I'll send you another link.
Thanks, folks.
Thanks. So the recording has been restarted and we're just waiting for all the board members to get back to the public side. I'll just look through the list. I'm waiting on Dan Shields. We'll give him just a minute, but right now I can see Anita, Christina, Chris, James, Joe, Tom and Todd. If I did my math right, that's seven. Ella left the meeting at 8:55 PM. So we'll give Dan another 30 seconds and if not. Oh, there he is.
There he is.
There's Dan. So now we're, we're at eight, eight board members have come back, as I mentioned. Ella left the meeting at 8:55 PM. So Tom, it's, it's all, it's all.
Need a motion to adjourn. James and Chris. Wow, Anita stayed silent on that one. James and Chris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
It's eight.
See you, folks.
Eight zero zero and the time is 9:27.
All right, folks. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Well, good night, folks.
The time and the work this evening. We'll see you all soon.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Bye bye.
Good night.